Six thirty-four, PM.
Can I make an addition to tonight's consent agenda, please?
Yes.
Yes. The Finance Committee would like to put forward on the consent agenda approval to liquidate the Ernest Rich Fund, which had existed in the Roxbury School District over the past, to be liquidated and incorporated any residual revenue into the Merbs General Fund. So this is essentially an accounting cleaning up process that Grant's been working on since the merger, and it was directly very clear before the merger. So we have finally got some clarification on this, and I'd like to wrap it up for Grant.
Does anyone want to discuss this?
Just one other point is this what this will essentially do is take $12,000 that was being accounted for in a pretty labor-intensive fashion and bring it into the district's general fund.
We skipped an agenda item, but I'd like to pull the policy monitoring from the consent agenda.
Yeah, we're not in consent agenda.
Okay, that's what I...
Okay, we're also going to add to the regular agenda a discussion about a possible lawsuit regarding the company Jewel that our district lawyer brought to us. So make those two additions, adding the Ernest Rich Fund cleanup to the consent agenda, and why don't we do the Jewel one before the learning focus? Is that okay?
Yep.
Is there... Is it... Would it be possible to put this fund into the...
Regular agenda? Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to put this in the regular agenda?
I don't think so.
As long as it happens at the very beginning.
As long as it begins.
Yes, before we do anything.
Because Brian's read Rob's rules all 600. It's not, I think, page 272. Now to Tina's point, public comment. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, which no longer has the Ernest Rich proposal on it, so...
Never had it.
Never had it. Well, I think it had it for like half a second.
You're no longer dead, okay.
Sorry.
Do you need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
If you've pulled the policy...
Yes, you wanted to pull the policy.
I'll move, since it wasn't seconded, I'll withdraw that and move to approve the consent agenda minus the policy monitoring report.
Second. Paws of paper? So let's talk about the Ernest Rich Fund.
Can we give it to the PIE group?
Oh, I think I have everything.
The parents, I forget what PIE stands for now, but...
Parents in Education, Partners in Education.
Partners in Education group.
Yes.
I'm not sure how we could give district money to another organization.
Oh, that's a good point. I guess because it was a gift rather than part of our... It didn't seem right to me to put it in the general fund if it's not tax-throwing you.
It's from... So it's... It was a gift in the 1990s.
It just seems like it would be cool if we could... Because if you could put it in Partners for Education, then it could keep its name on it, and maybe if it were used for something, it could have the name associated with something fun the community would appreciate.
Like I said, I know Grant's...
Bridget is right, it's a different organization.
Since it's a donation, are you allowed to do that?
I don't know. This is something that had already been verified with the auditors.
With the auditor's recommendations to put it in the general fund.
Yeah, for how to clean it up because of the amount of time.
Yeah, I was going to say, Grant wasn't able to find any records on what the money was donated for. He had had conversations with previous business managers in both the old districts, and there was really no... The money had never been used once it ended up in the district.
Is it still in the form of stock?
Yes.
Well, there's... There are four checks as well, totaling $4,000.
It's held in district-owned fund.
Now, now it is.
Well, since the... How did it... When did it get there?
It was always...
With the merger, with the merger it came.
Right.
It was in Roxbury before.
It was in the Roxbury District before.
It was in a publicly... Public entity's bank account before the merger, and it still is.
Yes.
But it was held in stocks.
In stocks.
Oh, it was held in stocks, okay.
So Grant has done a lot of...
The original gift was stocks.
But find... He... We could... Nobody had stock certificates for it or anything, so Grant had to request that, like had to get... Go through a rigmarole, but he couldn't request it at first because it was a new district, he's not Roxbury. So it was... It's taken a lot of time to get this strand out.
At a certain point, over $12,000, the labor costs start to really cut into the value of that money.
Well, and without a donor intent, there's no memory of the donor intent, that there's really no point in getting fancy.
Something we could always do, too, is if we do vote to move this into the general fund, and we can follow up with Grant... Well, if we move it into the general fund, that's discretionary, and we could do anything with it from there. So if we wanted... If we did find that there... If you want to do some silly thing in Ernest Rich's...
Right, I mean, if we ultimately found out who he was, we could do something like...
Are we owning stocks then? Is that something...
We could liquidate them.
That seems unusual for a school district.
It is. It's highly unusual.
It's highly unusual.
Wasn't there like a $700 transcript fee just to move it from the district that exists?
Which is why probably our auditor was just like, get rid of it.
So did you get rid of it? What exactly were you going to do with it?
Put it in the general fund.
But are we going to liquidate it? Or are we...
Yeah.
Liquidate it.
Yeah, so...
That's not...
Proposed actions, liquidate the stock.
Oh, there it is, the last line.
So then can I make a motion?
We're working under a motion right now. Are we just having a general...
I think we're just having a general discussion.
I move that we follow the... I move that we direct the administration to carry out the proposed actions for the Ernest Rich Fund.
A second.
Paws of paper? Any opposed? What she carries? If you want to talk about the...
Vermont, can figure out who is.
I know, I'm thinking the same thing. Rock Street, right?
The monitoring report, the very last thing on the monitoring report says more guidance from the board is helpful regarding what data they would like to see for all of the subgroups listed within this policy, particularly yada, yada, yada. See that last number six on here? And so I thought maybe to Libby's benefit, we pull it and say, not that we have to do this this moment, but how will we do this?
So my question there is how do I gather that data around family... Like what data would you see? It listed these subgroups under data the board would like to see about our student and family population. So one, how do I collect that data? I could just do surveys, that's going to be very limited. And when would you like to see it? And it's hard data to collect, but it happens.
Right.
And it's private data, it could be private data to collect.
Don't look at me. I'm saying I didn't know either, so that's fine.
Yeah, I...
I saw this come out today from Central Mont New Directions about the at-risk population encouraged in parents, kids from sixth grade to 12th grade, parents to take this survey. I'm wondering if there's some way that would get at some of the gender identity, sexual orientation, narrow stays, identifying kids at risk. Wondering if we could get some sort of report out from that.
From the Youth Risk Behavior Survey? We... I think we can, that's not out yet.
It's not out yet.
No. But yeah, when that comes out, we plan on fully analyzing that, and I will share that, those results from the board.
Because that might get to some of these...
It gets to some of them. Things it doesn't get to is marital status, family composition, that kind of thing.
Well, when I go back up to the original, the last line says the board will receive reports that monitors data to this end, so...
So the discrimination or discriminatory inequity...
Right, so maybe that's...
We talked about this in the different drafts of this policy, the data piece. And I feel like we had some indication from the administration at some point that everything was something that could be brought forward, it was achievable. I don't remember... We didn't get in specifics, did we, in those conversations when we were drafting this?
I think it could. I mean, we could bring information from survey data, this percentage of our student body identifies this way and has this family composition as to...
Would it be identifying in some cases?
It may very well be identifying. And we... I would end that, you know, if the N size is too small, I wouldn't state that to the board in any way, but I'd tell you that, right? As far as how... I guess monitoring the policy makes me look at it a lot closer, right? And so how do I let the board know that we have or don't have equitable practices for groups of people that concern their marital status or family composition, or that's harder to...
I think one...
It's hard to say.
One thing we were looking for, you do have number five here that we're working on complex resolution, but I would say incidents or complaints from students. You know, one thing that really moved a lot of people... A lot of people's awareness was the students of color bringing complaints of specific incidents that they were experiencing. And the family composition thing, actually I added after hearing that a student who was...
I bet you're coming, Michelle.
A student who was adopted and who was of a different ethnicity from their parents was upset about a class assignment where they had to write an essay about how resembling their parents affected their experience in life. And the student said, "I can't write this essay." And the teacher said, "Yeah, you can, go for it." So I doubt that was reported to anyone other than the student's friends, but you know, any kind of incident like that that does come to the attention of our administrators, if we can see a decline over time in those incidents arising.
So the issue of reported discrimination, that would be the data in preference to who falls in that category. Maybe it doesn't matter if nobody's being discriminated against. I know that sounds a little strange, but if we had some accounting of reports.
Incidents, yeah. Because I think, you know, we have a tendency to think, oh, everybody's happy here, everybody's nice to each other, and then we hear from students that that's not the case, but it's...
Actually, I was thinking, as you talked about it, maybe it wouldn't be bad if the incidents reported went up, if that was the issue.
Initially.
Right.
Yeah. I'm going to grapple with that a little bit more. It's okay.
I was just remembering that I think that's what we were talking about, was student, you know, the student experience of feeling marginalized.
I have a question on it. I mean, number four, under compliance, and it is correct, we have not addressed religion on our policy and on our data measures, and we've been asked to do so.
Yes.
I talked to a former school board member about the religion policy that the former district had that was not picked up by the new district. There wasn't any institutional memory left on the board about the origin of that policy, so I think the policy committee just thought, well, there's no... This isn't a VVSBA policy, like maybe this is just an out-of-date policy, so it wasn't in the first tranche of things where we were doing all of the required policies. But it turns out, it was never a VSBA policy, and it had been a very specific community effort to address religion. And it's a very thoughtful, it's very detailed, I mean, it goes to the level of a procedure in some cases, I would say, but it was addressing scheduling, awareness of holidays, curriculum, how religious holidays are acknowledged in the classroom or not, music, education around religion, the difference between teaching about religion and celebrating religious holidays. So it's something that we could probably should, actually, we should look at that policy again and think about whether we didn't address the issue enough in this policy.
When I was having conversations with the group who brought this to my attention, we looked at that policy together and came to... Well, I don't want to speak for other people, however, it was my understanding in the conversation that I was saying I'm monitoring the equity, diversity, inclusion policy upcoming because it was very recent. And I said, I wonder if just adding religion to that policy suffices the need from this particular organization? And they said, yes, it would, instead of having the separate policy. Because we got into lots of good conversations around when that policy was written, we had a different population of students, so which religions do we teach and which don't we? And how do I get my teachers trained on all of the religions of the world? And how do I get them experts so they're not just talking about matzah balls? And how... You know, like I was asking some questions around that kind of thing, which is my reading of the original policy, the religion policy, was asking our teachers to do. So they were like, those are all very good questions, I think you just need to put in your equity policy. That was the final kind of conversation point, but I don't also want to speak for them.
Yeah, and how would that look? I mean, I... I just have to look at the policy. My understanding is the... You know, the big issue is kind of awareness, especially awareness of like this, we have our calendar and scheduling tends to revolve around primarily Christian holidays, and I think there's some awareness of Jewish holidays and very little awareness of Muslim, Hindu, even other major religious holidays, and virtually no awareness of minor religious occurrences. So, you know, when we schedule, you know, something on Yom Kippur, that creates a problem for a lot of our parents.
Yep, we had those conversations. Jim has been involved with myself and Anna as we pulled... We've made steps already to pull lists of all the major holidays and make sure that everybody has those, and they're not scheduling field trips, and they're not scheduling big track meets and things like that that happened this fall. We messed up this fall, right? So we're going to fix that through other means, too. I'm not sure our policy's going to help, you know, like if we need to take that step or not.
But adding something to the equity policy might be appropriate.
Might remind us even of what we're doing.
Yeah. And it would remind you in monitoring that's something that's being monitored for.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think whenever we have these discussions about religion, and I talk with my wife about these, I can't help but think about two of my best friends in high school practiced Ramadan, and they wouldn't eat for a month during the days, and all day long, they were hungry and having to go to school. And they were brothers, one of them was the goalie on our soccer team, and like 30 minutes before a match was going to begin, he was eating for the first time all day, and I just felt for him. But, you know, there are a lot of different considerations. I don't know exactly how a school schedules around all of these different...
I mean, and it practically can't make everything stop, but I think awareness and an intent done, I think also knowing the demographics of your community, too.
It's just more of an even distribution across the calendar year, rather than making sure all the sporting events don't fall on one religious holiday versus... Or one religious tradition versus another. That would really be the best-case scenario, is that everybody has one sporting event that they can go home and celebrate with a traditional festive meal.
A traditional festive meal.
I think it might be helpful, and this is going farther than we're contemplating, but to invite in either families or probably families would be best, invite in parents of non-Christian faiths and ask them, like, which days of the year are really non-negotiable? Because we don't, you know, as... I don't know. I know there are differences in the seriousness of, you know, different holidays, and you're going to... It's going to be a big problem to schedule an event on this holiday, but not necessarily that holiday. And if we just asked...
So again, I ask how? So how do I ask people when I'm not identifying their religion for them?
Could you use a Google form, asking?
Okay.
Could you put it in the principal's newsletter? Hey, if you want to help us learn about what's important, contact us.
Okay.
I think also Jim's point about an awareness, the bottom line for me would be I wouldn't want you penalized. So if you took off today because of some holiday that was important to your religion, I don't want the teacher to be giving you a guff or you to lose something because of it, you know, that's sort of, to me, the bottom line.
You know, I wonder, do we have this data already? If we went back and we looked at attendance records, and we found that there were certain weeks throughout the year that we were having high absent rates because there was a tradition that was being celebrated that didn't fit with the school calendar?
I don't know if our N size is big enough to be...
Yeah.
You might not be able to do it just from that, because some students might come and feel very conflicted, you know, families might feel conflicted, where they want their kid to do well on... They have an exam that day, and they want them to do well on that exam, but, you know, they're not practical.
We have ideas of how to work through this, it's just in terms of a policy's perspective, this particular organization asked if the policy committee would consider adding religion to the equity, diversity, and inclusion policy.
I thought it was already on there, so it's just...
It's not.
Yeah, I think it certainly was.
I think you can put that in the oversight category.
Yep.
Thank you for that discussion. I move that we accept the monitoring report.
Second?
Second.
Paws of paper? Any opposed? Great. Let's move to the Jewel, yes.
I do have to talk about Jewel.
Yeah, I can give a brief...
Yep.
...of you that can fill in. So Pedro Lynn, our attorney who does work for the district, contacted us. He's apparently been in touch with some other attorneys, and there is a class action lawsuit that is being put together against the company Jewel for basically practices that target youths for their products. And as you're probably all aware, the more we know about vaping and smokeless tobacco and, you know, et cetera, the more realizing that the health risks are huge, the addiction risks are huge, and there does appear to be a very deliberate intention to mark these products as... So there's... I see several upsides to this, very few downsides. It would be litigation focused on holding the company accountable for their practices targeting kids, with the possibility of a large settlement that I think would both be punitive for the company, hopefully result in changes in their practices, if not, you know, changes in their business model. And it has the potential to bring not insubstantial funds into the district as part of a settlement award. And I think, you know, as long as we continue to check, and it's very legit, and it seems to be very legit...
Pedro would send it to us if it weren't.
Yeah, Pedro would not send it to us if it weren't. I don't see any real negative downsides. I think the community would be supportive, and I'm certainly supportive, so...
Would it do more than just target with this lawsuit potentially establish precedent for other vape makers as well? I know Jewel is like the big game in town, but...
It could, yeah. I mean, it could certainly send a signal that, you know, that if you target kids, the school districts will come after you, then it's all okay.
And is this... Has this lawsuit already been filed, and there's just more parties that are joining, or how?
I got the impression from the email that it was in the works. I don't know if it's been filed in Vermont.
So we wouldn't have any attorney fee liability?
It's a contingency.
It's a contingency, yes. I was assuming that word. Is it going to be filed in Vermont, or is it a national...
I don't think it's been filed in Vermont. There was an article on it.
So if we win, Pedro gets paid, but do we?
Well, that's going to be... Is Pedro counseling the case, or is he just referring us?
He was contacted.
He was contacted. I think he sent us an article, and it's been a few days since I read it, from the Los Angeles Times about this. So I think it's... It may be originated in California.
What would our liability...
He said other districts in Vermont are interested.
There are four already who have signed on.
Four who have signed on? Did you know who they are?
Yes. Should I say that now? Let me bring it up.
Have you been told not to say it?
Nope.
Okay, then go ahead.
Must be public now.
It will be.
If they haven't filed suit, why not be public?
Maple Run, which is St. Albans, Essex Westford, Addison Northwest, Colchester, and others will join.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Do we have to... Well...
In principle, I'm all for it. I don't know what type of liability would be exposed to, expenses we could be exposed to.
Be exposed to...
I mean, the only possible one is if it was... I mean, I can't imagine it's such a basis case that they'd be able to go out there and throw fees.
Right, that's a pretty high standard. There could be discovery, you know, so you could end up having to turn over documents and search for records.
That's what I was wondering.
Your administrators get deposed, could happen in any lawsuit.
Do we have any basis... Do we have any basis beyond obvious to claim that our kids are harmed? I mean...
We know there's use, right?
Yeah, are you asking whether or not our kids are using these products?
Oh, no, I know that the kids are using the products. That is not a question. But I just don't know, you know, Bridget was saying that if they charge us for discovery, they're looking for documents. Do we have... I guess we have documentation of when we've caught kids, but...
We would have documentation of when we've caught kids. We'd also have documentation of, going back to what Becky talked about yesterday, or a little while ago, about the youth behavior survey, that they report out, self-reporting data.
Could it potentially have health records of students?
No.
Jim, is there a point at which if we're going to discuss possible evidence the district might have, that we would do this in executive session? Whether we do or do not have evidence that might support it? I don't know whether it makes sense to have that be on the public record if we're considering litigation. If we're, you know, the decision to have to engage in litigation is not something that we would necessarily put into a closed session, but if there's something that would disadvantage or advantage, you know, in a case, I just don't know. I don't know.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I'm not even sure what our litigation approval process is, whether... Who...
Yeah, I mean, we've done some amicus briefs, and the board has approved.
But we haven't.
Participating?
We haven't been plaintiff in a suit.
No, we haven't.
Which is why I thought it would be good to discuss it with the board, because I'm not...
Yeah. It feels like a decision the board should make, to me.
Yeah, that's my...
It feels like a decision the board should make.
Why would it be the school district doing that? Why wouldn't it be the parents? Why would it be the school district doing that? Why wouldn't it be the parents?
Well, I mean.
Because the school district incurs costs.
Yeah, the theory would be that the school districts are incurring some particularized harm in, in dealing with the problem, I assume. I haven't read about the claims, but that would be the theory.
Does it, does it make sense that you and Jim maybe would see this specific written complaint? So you, I mean, it's hard to answer when you don't know, or do you have that already?
What's the timing? What's the timing of the need for a decision?
Right.
Pietro got in touch with me last week. I emailed Jim and Renee, the high school principal, to see what their thoughts were. Renee immediately was like, I'm all in. They're targeting our kids. Jim and I talked about it on Friday. I asked Pietro a couple more questions, like who's, who's joining and did he see any potential downfall? And he said, no. He did not, as, as our lawyer, and he told me the other districts that have already signed on. And then he sent me just this afternoon a client representation agreement. So he, I don't know. He hasn't told me, like, you need a drop dead date.
Could we, could we, I'm just supposed, what do people think about a motion to have Jim, I don't know how the chair and vice chair feel about exploring this, taking a look at this language and then next meeting we could vote on it?
Right, you could tell us if you see any big disadvantages to doing this.
Maybe we could have a discussion next meeting in executive session if we feel like that's called for.
Just give both of you an opportunity to look it over a little more as the chair and vice chair and lawyer and lawyer.
We are not the school district lawyers.
No, not the school district lawyers, but yeah, that's important to distinguish.
Who's the client, who's the form between us and who? Who's the sign on as a client representation letter?
The district. Lynn and Lynn.
The district.
And?
Lynn and Lynn, it's the, it's Pietro's law firm.
Pietro's firm, okay.
So that.
So they are the council.
Fraser P L C and Maile and Maile P L L C. So we'd have to look and see exactly who they are.
I propose that you guys look at it and tell us next time what you think.
So they may have stepped into the Vermont schools is what I'm guessing. If this is a national thing, they may be rounding up all the Vermont schools.
I think, yeah.
So we need to at least understand our relationship with them and whatever might come back.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's get it further. But there's, in general.
Yes.
If, yes, yeah.
Major public health issue facing your kids.
Figure out what potential liability the district could incur if things go sideways.
Yeah.
Okay. Or if we just have particularly aggressive defense counsel who wanna make us feel pain for doing this.
So this is more, this is less me talking and more asking the board to look at the enrichment data that we have right now in terms of the money that's been spent. The board has discussed on numerous occasions how much and what we wanna put in our budget in regards to enrichment after-school activities. And as Grant and the administrative team and myself are forming this year's budget, I was interested in you looking at the data that we have thus far and having a discussion amongst yourselves around where we wanna go with this. Because a decision could significantly impact other things that we're looking at in the budget process. So there's no real learning here other than here's the data. Discuss what we wanna do in, in terms of future, future budget.
And maybe you would explain to the finance team that we had spent more this year on the after-school program than we had anticipated.
Than we had anticipated, yes. We did spend, we have, we are spending more on after-school enrichment than anticipated for several reasons. So the, the budget that you see here in fiscal year 20, canoes, life jackets, paddles, kayaks and trailers were repossessed by people and we had to buy new ones. So for our, for our PE classes to use. So that was an unanticipated equipment fee, which we used fund balance money for. The Bridges program at Roxbury was more than anticipated in the budget. It was brought to our attention after the budget process, after the budget had been voted on last year in the spring. So that was more. And currently is the, the parent contribution hasn't come in quite at the exact rate that we thought it would come in at this point in the year. That could change over time as Drew is starting a new program and technically. And he's, he's learning his ways around what he can and cannot do after school, so.
So what, what are your questions to us?
So the question is, the board has, the board has discussed putting more money in our enrichment budget. Do we pay for it all? Do we not pay for it all? Why do we pay for some enrichment activities and not other enrichment activities? And so right now, we will budget for basically, again, how this year has gone. Should the board not give us other guidance. But if the board wants more money put in that, then you need to tell us now because we're gonna have to cut somewhere else.
Why would we put, the way you said it, it sounds like we're putting more money in some enrichment activities and less money in others. Is that true?
No, it's just differently spent. So we budget for sports. We don't charge kids for sports. But we charge kids for mountain biking. You know what I mean? So it's just differently spent, yeah.
All the things that fall under enrichment are sort of funded in the same manner. You don't, you don't fund more for canoes than you do for kayaks.
Oh, no, 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 no. Yeah, no, that's funded in the same manner.
It's kind of the bucket of what do we call enrichment and what do we call?
Extra curriculars.
Extracurriculars and sports, yeah.
Is there anything else, is there anything else in that category? You got sports and then all these things.
There's all these music, there's clubs, music, yeah. There are some things that we offer from the, from, from the co-curricular perspective that.
That are also covered in the way sports is.
Yes.
Isn't the plague, I mean, isn't the drama part?
We have sports teams that fundraise though quite a bit.
When sports teams fundraise, they're fundraising for.
Extra stuff, like fancy jackets.
Extra. Yeah, fancy jackets or things with their name across the back of them. Or, you know, they're, they're funding for things that are not gonna be school district property after the season is over, that the kids are gonna take home themselves.
And busing for, for transportation.
That's included in the co-curriculars.
I had a, I'm sure that Libby could tell the same stories, but I had a interesting experience with Drew in the last month. I went on an overnight camping trip with the kids who were learning kind of like the outdoor wilderness skills. And we went over to Grot and it was a wonderful, wonderful time. I had a fifth grader and a seventh grader in that after-school program and, and Drew and I got to sleep and I leaned to together and talk and about kind of what's going on with the program and kind of challenges. And I got to observe firsthand some of the dynamics and first of all, Drew's incredible. Number one. And his ideas are huge. And I know that what's out there, there is a ton of potential. I kind of feel like Drew sees it all as his own, kind of he's the, you know, he does it. And it would be nice if it was a team, it was, there were more humans to do, to execute the plan because there's only so much that can be done with the, with the resources. I'm sure it's true without, throughout the school district. And, but one of the real challenges I could see and then it, and then it played out immediately afterwards was that, you know, fifth through eighth is a big range in middle school. And it's, it's really tough to design a, a, a single after-school activity that would serve all those kids. And, and he was trying to do that, but what he saw was that it's hard to keep kids. You know, like for instance, like if you had an outing kind of club or something and you tried to run that, it would, you really need to dramatically change what you're offering from the younger to the older in order to keep the older interested. And so then, you know, then we had the signups for the next section and my oldest was like, I'm not doing that again. And I'm like, why? Because I was the oldest kid and it wasn't, you know, and I knew all that stuff already, right? And it was too bad because it was such, it's such a great program, but I get it. And I just see that there's so much potential. And so I would definitely advocate for the resources to, to let that vision kind of bloom a little bit more anyway before we kind of box it in with resources and you know, so it's a big responsibility first to put on one person's shoulders. I mean, I know he has the support of the administration, but it is a, it is a tough job for, you know.
On the other hand, this is sort of a new program that's just started and hasn't even played out. And my first reaction, right? My first reaction would be to play it out another year in the budget as it has been this year and then tend to, you know, even what would he think he needed? And he'd have a better idea.
Yeah, he, Drew is fantastic. I wanna make sure that we say that on public record. And I keep pushing him to get his license so we can use him even more powerfully.
Yeah, of course. That would be fantastic, exactly.
And more. And, and one of the, like he, you know, it's a new, it is a new season, right? So, so he was saying, I was just talking to him the other day, he's like, look, fall, like fall sports teams are big. They're, they're larger teams, right? And so he's like, that takes a lot of kids who might be interested in the things I can offer. So I didn't get as many people who I thought I'd get for the fall. Winter teams are smaller, you know, and there, there might be less of them. So I'm, I'm counting on more kids signing up for skiing and, you know, like all the, the bigger programs that he typically runs. So he, he's in playing with numbers still and, and learning what to expect from just seasons and sports alone.
So I think he'll have a better idea after another year, what more he needs.
One of the things I know that he's experienced, or we've experienced as parents is scrambling to find advisors basically for the different projects. So it's not just him running from one to the next, to the next, doing it himself only. And, or at least getting a co-person to help him with some of those things. And I don't know how successful that is. I don't know how well that's going, but I think it's limiting or directing kind of what he can offer and what he can't.
Yeah, and that's been a new experience for us financially too. Like how do you, is it a contractor contract that we offer? Is it a co-curricular? Then they become our employees, but they're not really our employee. You know, like it gets tricky very, and then whose insurance? It, it gets really, just the business logistics and bureaucratic structure of how we have to run our finances. We have to, we're learning that still. We're making it work right now, but I know that he's feeling a lot like he has to do it all because it's the easiest way to do it because he's already our employee. So, so yeah, we've had to learn how to do that.
So on the finance side, the estimated compared to the budgeted amount, that difference, have we addressed that previously? How we're going to cover that?
Well, we don't have to buy canoes or kayaks now. We've got.
Well, no, 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 for, for, it's the current fiscal year. If you only have a certain amount budgeted.
Say it again, I'm sorry.
So there's about a $40,000 difference between what was budgeted and what you're estimating is gonna be needed for the program for the year? Have we had a discussion yet about how that's going to be covered?
I mean, it was mentioned in the first quarter report. It's one of the things that we're over on.
But have.
Any of these costs are addressed in the fund balance.
Pull it from fund balance. Are you asking how to cover this year or what about next year?
I'm talking about right now fiscal year 20.
Normally we get a proposal to move things from fund balance and we haven't seen that.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I'm, that's what I'm getting at.
Grant is on that kind of thing.
I was wondering what the plan is.
I think he's waiting to see what happens, right? So just the, the, the fall thing I was just talking about, you know, like we could get way more kids in the winter. Taking part of our.
So more program fees.
Which means more parental involvement.
Already baked in here, at least in the 21 budget. Oh no, it's in here as well.
You have your actuals there and we don't know what the estimate is for full year, right? So we haven't gone through a full year yet. So it's hard to know what to ask for yet. That's what, that's what I guess I'm getting at.
Okay. My, my question to you is, and, and I think you just answered it, but I just wanna make sure we're all clear. How do you plan to cover that difference if it ends up being the estimated amount? What is going to be the proposal? Is it going to be use fund balance? Is it going to be shift from elsewhere?
For this fiscal year, we will ask to use fund balance.
Okay. I wasn't certain if there was another area of the budget.
Sometimes the budget.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
But it's a little early because it's only the first quarter, so it's hard to know where that will land.
Yeah, but should that not happen? Should he not be able to figure it out in other ways? We'd ask for it, how to find out.
Okay.
The Jewel settlement.
Yeah, the Jewel settlement. Drew would be psyched.
Isn't, isn't that, well, that's kind of how we got the scoreboard in the middle school, right? Was like Coke's apology for giving the kids so much sugar.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm comfortable continuing the current level of funding given the newness of the program. I mean, it doesn't sound like we have a specific proposal for, we need X to do something else.
And honestly, it sounds like because we really don't know yet. We haven't played it out a year.
Let us play it out a year.
You'll let us play it out.
Is that kind of what you're recommending is that keep it the way it is? I mean, I, because otherwise you might come in here and go, you know what, we're seeing this, that really this isn't gonna work unless we add X or you know, we're not really saying that, are you?
No, I'm not saying it's not, not gonna work. I think we're servicing very similar amount of kids as we have in the past through this programming. It's, it's just now we're dealing with the finance, like it's just financial and bureaucratic things that we have to figure out. And let it play. I would, I would recommend to the board that we, we budget this year based on what we are thinking this year's cost, or budget next year, sorry. Based on what we've thought about already and bumping it a little for the Bridges piece because we know they're gonna come out and ask us for more about that. And then let's figure out how, like what we really want for the next year.
And, and we did discuss this during finance committee. I mean, the, the issue of Bridges, we, it is something that deserves evaluation because that's about 20% of the resources which for after-school, which is going to this Bridges program. And the question is, could we, you know, use our might be, might, might we be able to provide more for the same amount of money or provide the same amount for a little bit less?
Bridges is part of the 24th century grant. And so we have to decide whether we stick with that grant or it would be cheaper to do it on our own.
We're paying, that money goes to?
Central.
Yeah.
One thing that might be interesting to, to, and this question I don't think is answered in here, is to look at the ages of the kids or the grades of the kids who are taking advantage of the program. Am I missing it or is it not?
You break it out by high school and middle school, but.
I'm, I'm sorry. And I, I think even more fine sort on it. I think we might see some real trends in that. You know, I think that the intersection, the intersection of the enrichment and the, the childcare kind of family need versus enhance enrichment. And I think you can see it pretty clearly in the middle school that it, it moves pretty quickly from young to old in terms of the family does much less need for childcare. Or perhaps the kids are more resistant to childcare as they get older. Either way, it's, it drops off fast and yet we really wanna be doing enrichment for those kids who maybe don't even, they aren't attracted to it naturally, but it may be also the types of program we're offering aren't attracting those kids. And so if there's no family need, maybe we don't need to spend the money unless we see it as a value to do enrichment. So I just think maybe if we knew ages, it would help us sort that out a little more.
And we'll know better, as she was saying, difference between fall sports, winter sports, once we have a year of data.
And Drew, I think, has been putting some effort into learning what he can offer at a high school in particular.
Yeah.
I mean, you'll see that kind of down in the, in my chest.
How can he be in two places at once?
He's a busy man.
And we were, we were previously spending, what, like between 40 and 50?
Oh, more than that, yeah.
Uh, well, we, we were giving community connections last, last year it was budgeted, like 37,000 was budgeted for community connections and parents were paying on top of that.
And this year, we're looking at 93,000 for the same services and parents. And this year, we're looking at ninety-three thousand for the same services and parents.
You're including bridges now, so you have to take that out.
Oh, yeah, yeah, take bridges out, so it's seventy-eight thousand.
And the equipment you have to take out.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So sixty thousand? But are we getting better value for that money from your perspective?
I think that's yet to be determined.
Okay. Because it is, you know, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-four thou, it's almost, you know, it's like a forty percent increase in what we're spending for the same end, end result. And the question is, is the result better? You know, are more kids participating? And we don't know the answer to that, are, you know, more.
We are off, we are providing a higher quality job for Drew than he had, I believe. Which is also, was also a goal of the change.
It's also kind of a false comparison since the other program, I mean, at least when you think about things like the insurance, the bands, the insurance like that, those things weren't really going to be able to be continued the way they were anyway. So we have to be careful not to, you know, there's some, there's, there would have been some escalation in costs. We tried to keep it outside the building, outside this district anyway.
The other thing is, Steve, to that end as well, the other thing that is not contributing to that, which is an enormous factor, was that basically the fees that UES parents were paying, Community Connections for the after-school care, were paying for the middle school programming. So we gave thirty-six thousand dollars to Community Connections. However, the reason why they were able to do enrichment programming was because UES was a very large moneymaker for them. And so, you know, it was, it was almost like an add-on because UES was such a big moneymaker.
So now, now UES is served by part two.
As well as MSMS, we have seven to fifteen kids in that, too.
Are parents paying less?
Depends on their supposed economic status.
I think it's just too soon.
So part two is also at the middle school. So we have, in addition to this program at the middle school, we also have a childcare program at the middle school.
That only serves younger kids.
That only serves younger kids and doesn't cost us.
Doesn't cost the district anything.
Okay. So we do have, and we have somewhat expanded our after-school options.
Oh, we have definitely expanded our after-school options in that way. I'm sorry, I wasn't including part two in that. We most definitely expanded our after-school options.
But I mean, it's only November sixth. I mean, I, I don't know how we can possibly assess what's, what we're doing with it. It's just too soon.
But it does seem like.
Well, we can to an extent if we're offering like double the programs that we were before, and we have double the students enrolled this time of year. That's all I'm saying is, I think it's worth assessing. What, we're three months into the school year? It's worth at least saying how we're doing. Especially if we're being asked to say, do we want to continue doing?
Well, it's now or never because we're billing a budget.
Right, right.
Yeah, we only have three months, we do a minor assessment, and then we move on. We just say, you know what, we don't have enough data, let's keep going, and then.
That's what I'm saying, let's keep on with what we've got and see how the year plays out.
I would say, though, from the reckoning we just did, that it's looking decent. I mean, we are, we, our net expenditure is greater, but we have added programming and we have, when we're providing better quality employment, so.
Yeah, and that's the general story that I'm, I'm trying to dredge out of this because we're looking at, you know, if, if I'm a taxpayer who's watching this closely, I'm like, okay, you guys were spending thirty-seven thousand dollars before, now it's ninety-three thousand. We can explain the bridges component that's in there. And the equipment, which, which comes out of there. But then, you know, there, there is enhanced, if, if we're offering more programming, that's, you know, that's part of it. I'm just looking at what's going on on the municipal side, and I think that there's a very distinct chance that there's going to be some budgetary pressures this year on us that we haven't had in the past couple of years because of major health insurance overages and I think municipal tax rates.
And infrastructure.
At least they don't have to manage special education.
He started, Steve.
You know, I think the other part of the analysis would be to look at, at the part-two piece is going, and how parents are doing with that and all that. But I think it may, we can call, we can wait on that because it doesn't have a direct budgetary impact. But it will be part of our overall assessment of whether the decisions we've been making are going in the right direction.
That's a good end of the year.
Yeah.
I actually just spoke to them today about some of their numbers and things like that.
Great, maybe they at some point.
At what point do we have to, but at, well, at what point do we have to renew the contract or not? I assume that you do that, but isn't there a?
They are going to do summer programming, and, I mean, it's kind of a year-round continuation. So unless we see significant reason to not use them.
So there's not an actual contract that's gonna, that has an end date?
No.
That has to be renewed?
They will be doing, or summer programming, starting up right after school.
Well, we have a contract with them, right?
There must be some provision in the contract about renewal or termination or something.
I'd have to check.
So that, because that just might be a timing point.
Yes, I'd have to check.
With, with end of time, I mean, we should probably be looking at, you know, just to do that kind of due diligence, hey, we made huge changes, and now let's go back and reflect, and how, how are we feeling about these changes? And, you know, how is, how is the community feeling about these changes? And it'd be great to have them come in or whoever, and, not yet, but at some point, like, you know, in January or something maybe, or March.
Yeah.
That's a different topic.
That's a different topic, exactly.
Did you need something?
No, no, so what I'm understanding from the discussion is that we're gonna, we're gonna budget similarly, similarly, sorry, similarly to how we budget this year, using perhaps more of our actuals once, um, using perhaps more of our actuals. And the board is okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That's it.
Great, perfect. So now we are on to board discussion. District enrollment, MHS class sizes. And motion to, and with the action of being able to approve the one FTE hire for the school year of middle school. So open up the discussion. Let's see if everyone scrolled through the data, which.
I have a, I have a general question.
Other than wanting to take district opening fiction, I don't have.
I want to take Irish. We're talking about what high school classes we want to take.
So we, we have this, we, what, what you can see in the red and yellow table here, and we were talking with Grant about this before, is you can see a bubble moving up in terms of class size. And it's, it's, there's a distinct possibility that, you know, it, I think, our, our average class size will go back to our sweet spot, you know, two, three years from now in MSMS. So how, what, what are you thinking about, Libby, in terms of a plan for addressing this?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question, Andrew. So, um, in discussing this, like with Pam, what, and Jim knows this as well, as we're projecting out three years of what our needs are academically and socially, emotionally, hiring an F, one FTE now to address the bubble of kids that will be there for the next two years, because, after this year, right? So it's a sixth grade class now that is large, and then in seventy, right, will continue to be large. Once that bubble moves through, moving that FTE into an intervention position, which is, which is needed at the middle school as well, and will continue to be needed. So that's the idea, is that it wouldn't always be in a classroom teacher piece. It would move into a supports, a support, a teacher support, not a IA, but a support for either SEL or academic intervention.
And are you thinking it'll be the same person? Or are you thinking that there's going to be attrition? Every year there's a certain amount of attrition, and with one of those teaching positions, you'll repurpose that?
That is really hard to answer because it depends on licensure.
Right.
Middle school licensure is a beast. So you could be hired under a K-six license, so you could teach up to sixth grade, all content areas. Or there's a middle-level endorsement, not six-twelve, a middle-level endorsement, which is a content-specific, so you could only teach seventh grade math, math, for instance. Um, so it really depends who the hire is and what their licensure availability is.
So do you think you might hire under a one-year contract for next year and a one-year contract for the next year? Because an interventionist might have, you want to have other skills.
If I'm a.
It wouldn't continue to be, well, if you're hiring any new teacher, it's a provisional for two years. So technically, I mean, when you really get down to it, you're hiring for, it's a provisional, right?
It's a provisional, but I'm trying to be honest up to the teacher I'm hiring to. So I might say, okay, this is a sixth grade position. You might be certified to teach sixth grade, right? This year, but then you're not certified perhaps to teach seventh.
Many middle-level educators have dual licensure, um, so we'd have to, it's a, it's a, it's a tricky beast, right? So we're, we want to hire the best person for the job. And the license, plenty of our educators have multiple licenses. Um, so it, it, it's an FTE. I don't want to think of it as a person, I want to think of it as an FTE. And where do we need that FTE at the middle school? Currently, we need it at that bubble of kids, which is classroom teacher.
Didn't, didn't we, did we not approve this yet?
No.
No, we discussed this.
This is the same thing we talked about before.
So has somebody actually registered for this, for, into sixth grade? Last, the last board meeting, you said a family was coming in to bump it up, and they hadn't registered yet. Did they actually register?
It's, I don't know, I don't think so.
But it sounds like we're on this collision course regardless.
We are on the collision course regardless. As I said, we, last meeting, I think we had thirty-four, thirty-five new students enrolled at the middle school this summer.
We're on this collision course, but the when we need to hire them does not necessarily come about unless there's somebody here to.
I guess the question is whether we want to have that volatility at all times, or whether we want to have, be positioned, yeah. Steve?
Yeah, I mean, I think that's the issue. Remember, we entered this fiscal year irresponsibly close to the line. That's one way to look at it, right? Is that, and therefore we put ourselves in a position where mid-year we're doing a hire, is that right?
Yes.
I mean, I'm not saying we were irresponsible, I'm saying that you could argue that we were. We were so close, we talked about that at the last meeting, that, you know, like, maybe we shouldn't have done that.
I don't think we were irresponsible, we were over the limit.
We were in the yellow.
But see, the thing is, the difference between being over a limit, which compels you to action, versus looking at your ideal is a really important distinction. And I think that what we try to do is be closer to the optimal, and then if we get close to that line, we know we're playing with fire. And in this case, we got burned. And so I'm, I'm not thinking we, in retrospect, we might do the exact same thing, but the point is that there's a good reason to step back from the edge. And whether or not, you know, we cross the over or not. And so if we step back from the edge, we don't have to, we don't have to be so reactive. My question, though, was, you, you had said, Libby, that we need an interventionist. Are we prepared to wait until the twenty-two, twenty-three year to get that interventionist? I mean, is it, I mean, if you know now that you would ideally have one, and we're going to see the bubble start to relax at that point, is then the time to, to hire the extra FTE for that? Or do you feel like, well, there's still partial bubble there? Or, um, I'm just wondering how you, I get, I, to me, it's an easy one to say, look, we're going to use the FTE for, through twenty-one, twenty-two. Then that position may evaporate because we won't need it. That's, that's fine, it's, you know, it's hard personnel decisions, but it's the way it goes. But then what do you, what about this, this interventionist and putting it off for that long?
My best answer for that, Steve, which is a very good question, is, um, the administrative team has prioritized needs. And right now, the intervention position at MSMS, while has been a stated need, has not reached the priority level of other areas. Um, so there are large priorities that we can only ask for so much in a budget, in a budgetary year, and we have prioritized other things.
Yeah, so, so that's by no means sort of the, the hard plan is that that position will become an interventionist. It just sounds like it could be because you may need it earlier, or you may decide at that point that that's still not the need.
As we think three years out, which we are thinking right now, as what are, what's, what are we prioritizing, sorry, prioritizing next year versus the year after, versus the year after? As of what we know right now from our system and our needs at this moment in time, which could very well change, um, that, that is what our plan is.
You, you had said before, there was something about getting the system in order also, before you needed those people. So I assume you're still working on that.
Is, and is the maximum of twenty-five, I'm seeing the way, the way it was presented here, it looks like it's greater than nineteen or less than twenty-five. Doesn't look like it's less than or equal twenty-five, but I, I might just be looking at that too literally.
It's less than twenty-five.
So if we're at twenty-five, are we indeed at twenty-five right now? Because we have yellow as twenty-five, close to the max.
As soon as, if we get one more student in the sixth grade, we'll be at twenty-five. We're at ninety-nine.
So the, the red boxes are where we're at twenty-five, and the yellow boxes are where we're at twenty-four.
Well, it says twenty-five, and it's in yellow.
Yeah, that's wrong, huh?
Where are you?
Nineteen to twenty.
Current year.
Sixteen may have included. Oh, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, like, I'm saying, are we actually already at max?
My understanding is at currently, without this particular student registered, this poor student registered, that we have ninety-nine students in four sixth-grade classrooms, so we have.
We're right there.
We're right there.
And, and there's this question of, you know, what's the goal?
So we have twenty-five in three classrooms and twenty-four in one classroom, which.
You could take one more student and be at your max.
No, 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 I'm sorry, I'm, I'm wrong. That one student will push us over the max. Sorry, I was doing my math wrong.
Thank God we don't have to get into this level because it wouldn't be our job really.
It's also an average, so it's not that each classroom has to meet that, it's an average.
Yeah, somewhere above.
So I'm curious to ask if there was any consideration, since it's a student that maybe hasn't even registered yet, whether there was a consideration of hiring a halftime person who would be there for reading and math, let's say, and because it's only one student over the limit.
I think there's a question, though, I mean, what's, what's our goal? Is our goal to kind of stay in the optimal green zone? Or is it to stay absolutely, positively as close to the red lines?
Our goal is to be as close to optimal, the word optimal indicates that's where you want to be.
I want to correct myself earlier, I found my notes from, we are at one hundred right now. We are not at ninety-nine, we are at one hundred.
So, yeah, so we are at max.
We are at twenty-five, sorry.
I move to approve that the administration hire one FTE for the remainder of the school year for Main Street Middle School.
Paul, is it number? Hi, can you oppose? Abstentions?
Can I ask another question about the enrollment, which is unrelated to the middle school? Um, so this shows that the high school has sixty more kids in it this year than it had last year. How's that going? I mean, I'm just like, that's, that's a lot more kids in the building, is that?
It's like two-thirds a grade.
It's a twenty percent increase in the building.
My kids enrolled this summer.
My kid's impressed by the difference.
Really?
Yeah, in the, the feel of the school.
Does it, do they like it better?
She's just like, there are so many kids.
Yeah, that's a big increase, it's.
Are there any issues with things like, like lockers or sports teams or?
Our capacity is five hundred.
I don't know, I can't answer that question, I don't know.
We did, we did figure it out a few years ago that the high school capacity is five hundred. So like the cafeteria and the auditorium, I think maybe holds six hundred, which gives you five hundred students, any associated adults, if I remember correctly.
So I'm curious to know, given that.
Although we've changed the number of seats in the auditorium, so.
Just a little bit, no, no, I think we took, it ended up being like one or two rows, it's not as considerable now.
So it's definitely more kids, but it seems like it, it seems like they should fit? Maybe not at lunch, I don't, I've heard lunch.
I've heard they can all.
Well, they don't all go to lunch at the same time, so.
But there are only two lunch periods, so.
They seem to fit.
I haven't seen anybody standing while they did.
They also eat all over the school.
That's what I mean.
You know, they're not all there.
They go outside.
They go outside, some eat under the stairs, so, you know.
Dropping their food everywhere.
So I'm curious to ask, given all those numbers, so for example, in Algebra II, first semester, you have four classes.
Yes.
One with eight, one with five, one with six, one with eight. At the very least, why weren't the first two combined to be thirteen and the next two combined to be fourteen?
So it's a scheduling issue. It's, um, with a small school and the limited amount of people teaching each class, and the amount of classes that are offered to kids. Kids put in their preferences in this, in April for their, which they want, what they want to take. And then Power School has an algorithm to try to get rid of conflicts. And, because Power School does most of that for us, right? To try to get rid of conflicts. Now, this is an area that I was talking to Renee just today about. And she was like, I want to dig into this more to understand why things are happening. Um, however, things like chorus and band and those kind of things are only offered at very certain times because they're shared between schools. And so it gets to the point where things have to be offered at the same time. And so kids can't all go into, if they have. And so kids can't all go into, if they have to take algebra, they can't go into it because, one class, because they're taking chorus as well.
I, it's a choice. When you get smaller, you, uh, to be economical, you don't have as many choices.
Can I just interject though, that I had this understanding, at least from geometry, that there are math classes where honors and regular class are the same class. And I wouldn't rule out the possibility that that, that this algebra class and the Algebra II honors class could be the same class, because geometry runs that way.
It could very well be that way and this is how.
It's the same class, same teacher, some kids are doing the honors version and some kids are not.
It very well could be because of how Power School prints it out. This is a printout from Power School, so you.
Yes, this is the way math.
That's the way math works, that some kids are doing honors and others are not.
That would be helpful to know though, because when the community looks at this and says, you have four classes and the biggest one has eight and the lowest one has five.
I think they might be sitting in the same class with the other Algebra II class.
They are, for sure, guarantee.
Okay, yeah, because that's how geometry works.
That would be nice to know, yes, is what I'm saying.
I move to adjourn.
It's non-debatable.
Is there really ten of them?
Um, do you have anything else you want to talk about in terms of class size?
We should discuss with my motion first.
I second.
No, one second.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to.
Is, trying to be polite.
Is, is it? Well, I'm, I'm trying to make sure that, that I can get a second.
I think it's, it's too bad to cut off conversation about small classes at the high school when we spent a lot of years talking about those small classes.
Put it on the agenda.
Yeah.
Pardon me?
It is on, it was on, it is on the agenda.
Small classes in the high school?
MHS classes.
MHS class sizes on the agenda.
It just doesn't have a small in front of it.
I don't think that's why it's on the agenda. I think it's on the agenda because we're concerned about the size of some, we're concerned about the largeness rather than the smaller.
I mean, it seems like the.
I don't know, why was it on the agenda?
Well, I mean, I guess my thought on, on small, I mean, yeah, the high school's growing, we've got a bubble coming through.
Right.
I, I think the time to have a discussion about, you know, the small classes and consolidating is, is when we're, the trend's going the other way.
But it is on the agenda, so I was just trying to, why is it on the agenda? It's not, not, I'm not concerned that they're small.
Someone wanted a review of what the class sizes were and, and um, that's, that's.
Got it, okay.
And I think it's good to know coming in. Um, yeah, and it, it seems like information we get is more representative of the power, representative of the Power School world than what is actually sitting in various classes.
Yes, and the, while this gets into administrative minutia, but um, the board should keep in mind that our data manager who did run Power School is no longer with us. Um, we had challenges at his leaving, we have a brand new person running Power School now. Um, the guy's team relied on the old person, or the person who was previously in that position to run the scheduling. Um, and this is, and we have a new principal who is very much looking into some of these questions that you're asking us, so.
Yeah, but I mean, you know, the average class size is twenty-one point seven, so that's.
Which is?
Which is kind of a.
Kind of a sweet spot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds like.
Yeah.
Sure.
I, I talked to some educators.
My sense is the classes are large.
They prefer, they, they were saying like eighteen, twenty-two is the sweet spot. High school teachers. I'm sure someone's like, I, I totally depend on the class though, that you're teaching.
My sense is that the classes are big.
I presented to a class last week that was only like eight million.
That's because it's elective.
Oh, is that why?
Yeah.
So. Do we have a second for Mr. Mitchell's motion?
I seconded it a while back.
Okay. All is in favor?
All right.
Any of those? Great. Thank you.